I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. It's 5:05 on January 22nd. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well called.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. So it's item two, our work session, and we have three items there. We have our TAN, our Special Education Audit, and our Technology Audit. And how would we like to begin this? The TAN, PI Project. So the genesis of this is...
Well, I think, you know, maybe to kind of just re-ground everybody. So, you know, we have, we've always had kind of a list of ongoing facilities needs that has been evolving over time, you know, and this list has grown and changed over time. Mostly, you know, this has been a byproduct of having older facilities with more needs than we have finances to address. So we've had various studies done over the years. We had one in 2017 by an architectural firm that identified a number of things, and out of that came a prioritized list, which we've been trying to address, and then that list evolves too when we decide to do things like a security vestibule for the middle school that came up, you know, more importantly, or something like tennis courts where, you know, their condition warranted more immediate action. So this list has been evolving over time, and the hope was, a few years ago, was when we were looking at all of our facilities and we were looking at a bond issue to replace four buildings with one new building, just to kind of re-ground everybody. The original estimate on the new building came in at $39 million, and the Board at that time explored what was the most money we could go for in our bond issue, and that number was 44.5 million. So we decided we would use 5.5 million to attack some of this list, facilities needs list. Unfortunately, as pricing has come in, on the new building, it's more expensive than we had anticipated and hoped for, leaving right now the pool of money allocated from the bond issue to address these extra facility needs at 1.2 million dollars. And that number will change as we go for bid on the building as well as the construction process. We may see some savings, or we may run into some unexpected things that might chew into that. So that 1.2 million dollars could grow larger, or it could shrink depending on what happens with the building project. So, given that we don't have the funds to address everything on the list, this high priority list, the idea was brought forward that there is a mechanism in state law that would allow us to borrow money today with interest costs to attack some of these items on our list, and we would be borrowing against future revenues coming in from our PI levies. So we have two PI levies now. They total about 1.8 million dollars. One is primarily for TTT, which is Technology Textbooks and Transportation. So that money usually is going towards bus replacements, it's going towards textbooks, and it's going towards technology and infrastructure throughout the district. The other PI levy, which is about, I think about 800,000, Chris, is about 800,000?
775.
775, almost 800,000. That's what we've been using each year to try to do, you know, facilities needs. So whether that's asphalt and concrete, or it's roofing repair, or what have you, that's what we've been using. So this idea of a TAN came up, which is if the Board wanted to pursue trying to address some of these higher priority items on the list, we could potentially go use this TAN mechanism to borrow money so that we could address these issues sooner, but that borrowing would have costs associated with it. And Craig was able to run a few scenarios which got posted here based on if we borrowed, I think it was 6 million dollars over five years, you know, and the nominal interest rate you pick would have had us, you know, spending over 400,000 dollars in interest, you know, and if we went for 10 years, it'd be whatever, 800,000. So what we're talking about is that if we were, if the Board were to pursue this mechanism, you know, you're also talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in district money on interest that we can't use on facilities, because we would be getting that money today to try to do things today. And so I think what we're gonna, what we were gonna talk about was, we kind of reformatted, I reformatted the list of priorities a bit just to take the information that Chris had and just put it into a different view so that people could see, the Board could see kind of where we're at, where we were at with some of this, and put some notes in there. And I think the idea is to kind of talk through, you know, how urgent are these needs and is the Board interested in pursuing TAN funding to try to address some of these, and if so, what would that look like in terms of how much we would want to pursue?
I thought that we were, and you just are just way more proactive than I anticipated. I thought just last week we were gonna wait until you were officially onboard in February to look into that.
I appreciate you doing it so quickly, although I was reading through the email, seeing it
doesn't look like you have an opinion at this point as to which way you lean.
Well, yeah, it's just, for me, it's a little bit hard because I don't, I'm, hopefully we'll have a discussion of some of the needs, because what is the priority and like when does this need to be done, as well as maybe make sure we've looked at all of the mechanisms. So part of the discussion that I was gonna maybe talk about too is that, you know, there may be a possibility we can borrow against ourselves, we can borrow against the general fund to then pay back, and there's different things you can look at. So I was able to talk to the Auditor's Office today, just from an audit standpoint, because you can move, the Board can move funds between like a, you know, a permanent improvement fund and the general fund, but still has to make sure it qualifies. So the answer is yes, we can technically do that, which would eliminate the interest fees, which I believe are, it's a, and that is a market, that's a real interest rate that was pulled as of yesterday, so that was not just picked up at the cloud, that would be what we get, which is a very, very small percentage, but when you look at it over five years over that amount of money, it's a substantial amount of money. So, yes, I would, I have cautions over the use of TAN personally, because of the cost of the interest, but also recognizing the needs of the district and looking at those projects. I'm still catching up on some of the projects though.
Well, I guess, one of my questions would be, and nobody's gonna have an answer for this, although some people, you know, might be able to provide a pretty educated opinion, but this issue we have with the school building, like the construction costs came in so much higher than we thought, so are the construction costs or like the project costs gonna be more over that period of time than the interest that we pay? And I realize nobody's gonna have an answer to that question, but I feel like maybe some people who are in the business could provide an educated guess, like the cost of those projects is gonna increase by 500,000 if you wait six years, so you might as well pay the, I'd be curious to hear that, we get that information.
We've gotten some different quotes. I mean, even, even in the PI meeting, you have seen like some of those costs have gone up, and that's really due to labor and your inflation and, you know, construction costs right now are crazy. You know, concrete has gone up like 12 dollars a yard in just two years. I mean, it's really insane. So, yeah, right now, the longer you wait, you're gonna have, you're gonna have larger costs for projects just because of labor costs and materials costs, the longer you wait. And some of these projects have been on your list since prior to 2014. So how much of a gamble do we wanna take in terms of how much longer some of these projects are going, you know, these things are going to last? You know, we can keep band-aiding and band-aiding, and then some, at one point, band-aiding is gonna become more expensive than actually just, you know, ripping it off and starting over on some of them. So, and as Craig said, TAN is one option. I mean, Mark and I, and Chris had a conversation yesterday, you know, there's some theory over money, you could opt to do something, but I think the conversation really needs to be, you know, are we committed to doing some of these things that we've identified that are high priority, things that maybe we put off or we band-aided, you know, do we, do we just, do we bite the bullet actually and just kind of do it all at once? However the method is, whatever method of money or however you want to finance it, could be a second conversation, but I think first, you know, the Board needs to decide, you know, is this something that we want to address, or do we want to keep addressing it in the way that we have been, and that's strictly been through PI and, you know, chipping away at these things and letting some things, you know, go down the road a little bit?
I think some of this too, because the number one item on the list is roof, you know, roof replacement, roof repair. And years ago, and I can't remember how long ago it was, but we had, we had an assessment done, and, you know, they came, you know, they came back saying, do you remember the numbers, Chris?
Here has been 6 million dollars on roofs.
Yeah, it was, it was a massive number that said, hey, you should really like replace almost all your roofs.
That was in 2012.
Yeah, and so at the time, the Board thought that doesn't seem to make much sense. And so, Chris, maybe you could, you could give some, some background on what approach we decided to take, which was kind of a value-based approach.
So, so obviously, our goal is to extend the lives of the roofs that we have, and we've invested there. To Joel's point, I started in 15. The roofs were leaking, there was a number of roofs leaking because when the Board is faced with a multimillion dollar project, and there's no way to fund that at the time, I think we probably, we were going through the renewal cycle on levies, and I think, you know, we hadn't asked for new money in probably eight or nine years at that point, so finances were tight, so there was no way for the district to come up with 6 million dollars to do this large 6 or 7 million dollar roof project. Roofs were leaking, and so we started repairing roofs. And we don't spend 6 or 7 million dollars to replace a roof, we repair it. We are in a cycle of where we repair the roofs at this point until we no longer can repair the roofs. We've had some success in repairing the roofs, and that, Mark and I actually spoke yesterday about when, when you repair it, obviously you save a lot of money, you're repairing a 30-year-old roof, are you going to get five or 10 more years out of that roof, or will that roof start leaking again next year? And we've had some success in our repairs. We have stopped the water and the leaks from coming in very successfully with some repairs. We've done some very focused replacement on roofs where they're, they were beyond repair. We attempted to repair, and then it would just leak 10 feet further away, we'd repair that area and it would leak. And so we couldn't stop the water, and so we've done some very focused repairs. This summer's replacement is on a roof that is original, I believe it's nearly 60 years old, and we can't, we've tried to repair it unsuccessfully, and so we'll replace that roof, but the repairs that we are using, right, doing right now have been successful. And so an approach is to go in and invest in repairs. Again, again, when we repair, we've been very successful with our repairs. For the most part, we will reach a point where that level of success will be diminished. So the investment in the repair, will it still last another five years, or will we get a year out of it? A goal, regardless of whether we repair or replace, is to stop the roof leaks, and that's been a focus of the PI Committee and myself since day one, because the roofs were, they're not in the best condition. And again, an investment into those has shored those up. Again, we talk about a report that was done by roofing experts some years ago, roofs have life expectancies. We have taken a majority of our roofs beyond their life expectancy. So very good work was done before I got into the district with repairs, and we have redone a number of those repairs, and those are very successful. We're coming to the, what I would call the life expectancy of that repair will come in another year or two, and we'll need to invest again in those repairs.
So there's probably a good analogy would be our tennis courts. We repaired our tennis courts well beyond what they would normally last, and we kept buying more time and extending that runway of time, of usage, until we got to the end of the road, and the tennis courts cannot be repaired anymore. And so, we're not, we're not at that place with the roofs yet, at least, you know, we've been repairing them, we've been able to buy ourselves more time. We don't know how long that will last, but we know that we've been able to continue to extend their life and their usefulness. And so, so from an urgency standpoint, when we look at this, we're not at the same place as I would say like the tennis courts, where we know we're at the end of the life. So none of our roofs are technically at the end of their life, they're still repairable, but we know that that day is coming, that we will get to the end of the life. And so, you know, one question on this would be, you know, is now the time to put, you know, to commit down a pathway like this where you know that there's, you know, taxpayer money that's going to be used on financing costs potentially if we were to do a TAN? Or do we stay the course, and there are variables that are gonna come into focus in the next few months, next six months? One thing is, Craig will be coming onboard, so he'll get a chance to settle in and hopefully, you know, bring some, some thought ideas to the table with, with where we're at. When we get into our board meeting, we look at the financials, the latest financials that show us trending, 800,000 to the positive, which means by the end of the year, if that trend continues, we might have 800,000 more in the general fund than we had forecasted, you know, back in October. You've got, you've got the high school foundation analysis, which is wrapping up, which we're waiting to see, what are we, what's that cost going to be? You've got the building project bid day, what kind of bid day savings are we gonna get? You know, are we gonna have less money, or are we gonna have more money? So you've got these variables that are gonna unfold in the coming months, which will give us more clarity on what, you know, what this is gonna look like. So is now, is today the right time to say, let's commit to go doing this, or do we, you know, do we instead say, let's just pump the brakes on this a little bit and wait and see? Because we don't have, we don't have a burning fire that we have to put out right now, like this roof is toast and we've gotta replace it. The other, the other comment I would make too, and Craig alluded to it, you know, we have 18 million dollars in the general fund. I mean, you could use that money to fix any one of these if the Board so desired. I mean, it's not preferable that you're taking money from the general fund to get on these PIs, but you could do that. So if tomorrow, if, if today the Board decided, let's put this on the back burner, and tomorrow the roof went, you could say, look, we need, the best course is spend a million dollars and replace the high school roof. You could say, let's authorize go to the general fund and use a million dollars and replace the roof, and then, you know, we figure out later, you know, what that looks like. So money out of the general fund is, you know, it's what's used primarily for operating expenses in the district. And so at some point, when the trend line on those forecasts starts showing the expenses exceed revenues, you start chewing into your cash balance. That's what starts driving the conversation about, we either need to rein in expenses, or we need to look at generating new revenue, which means another levy. And so, but that's, we have, usually you have runway on that, you can start planning for it, like, hey, you know what? We wanna, we wanna extend that, that need for new money, so let's start changing course with our ship now on expenses. What, where can we rein in expenses? And that buffer is the cash balance, which can extend your runway a bit. So if you pull money from it to do a big project, you're affecting your, your runway of when you might need to go for a new levy, but not in a material effect. Like if we took a million dollars out of cash balance today, I don't think that would cause us to go out for a new levy a year earlier than we normally would, because a million dollars, although it's a lot of money, you know, and from an operating standpoint in a, you know, 48 million dollar budget, it's not, it's not huge.
I would say the only timing thing that, you know, the Board just needs to consider when making this decision is, you know, the reason this is coming up now is because if the Board were to opt to do any of these repairs, most of this work can't be done during the school year, you're not gonna be putting on a roof when kids are there. So it's a timing issue as well to say, you know, if the Board agrees to do this, we can go out for bid, and some of this work can get done over the summer when the kids aren't here. If the Board opts to put it on the back burner and not make that decision until we have some additional clarity on some funds that are coming in, that's gonna push the timeline to do anything if you choose to do anything another whole year, because you're not gonna be able to do some of this work during the school year. So it's just something to consider when you're thinking about now, or thinking about, you know, putting it off, that there's also a timing issue that we're trying to do some of these things when we're not in session as well.
Well, I have a couple of questions. When will we know, or I shouldn't say we, but when will SHUP know, like, how the bids come in? I thought that was...
They're left to pay for bids to come in, I believe it's February 7th, they quickly review those bids, and I think they have a GMP scheduled for our February board meeting to say, here's where, here's where the project is gonna come in at that price. So we'll know by, you know, mid-February where the project stands. And again, most of any bid day savings, the Board has the option of doing what they want with that, however, there's a time period that you have to wait to use that money too, because you, you look at contingencies and other things that are going on. So you'll have a little bit more clarity on what the project will cost at that point.
Okay. And then, did I read through some of your information correctly, Chris? Do we already have money set aside to do that middle school security foyer later this year?
We have identified bond, the building fund money.
Okay. So that, that project is...
Currently being designed as we speak. And that, that, I mean, we just gave that direction at the last core meeting two weeks ago. So they're doing that design, and that's something that, you know, while we wouldn't, they should have design done so we could do that for the summer, so that's something that is already kind of in process. But again, it's just a guesstimate on the cost of what we think it's gonna be.
Chris, just to clarify, I mean, if we, if we needed to go forward with some major roof repair, are we saying we would have to empty the building and we couldn't do the repair and use the building at the same time?
It's not a good idea to replace roofs while students are in session.
But like the high school, which is...
Different from the seniors.
Right. But like the high school, the shingle replacement, that's a pitched roof with shingles on it, right?
I, I would, I would not recommend to the Board to do a large roof replacement project while students are in session. I would not make that...
It's so distracting too. I mean, I've lived through that, and we're at OST time, so, I mean, this is our big time in education, so it's just distracting. Loud, smells, goes to the ventilation, am I not right?
So the pitched roofs, it's going to be loud, they're going to be using air guns to dry nail into a wood deck.
You know, here's, so to me, this seems, I understand we need to do some of these things, we do need to get to work on them, I recognize that. Although, I also recognize the fact that I feel like I haven't had a substantial conversation on our finances for five months, where we're going through, you know, I really would like you to come onboard, Craig. I'd like you, you know, to get up to speed, obviously, as fast as you can, and I'd like to hear somebody making recommendations on here's what your options are, because the TAN is one option, and there are a multitude of options, it seems like. So, and I don't know how, but I would, I need guidance, and that's what your job is, and so I would, I cannot, I can't condone this this month for sure, until I feel like I understood everything, and I don't even have a full understanding.
It seems to me I agree with the variety of options that we potentially have, and which makes sense, or what blend or combination makes sense.
I agree with both of you. I think it would be helpful though to, like, get some, like, data in about the increase in construction costs over, you know, the last 12 months, or, you know, I don't know how we access that information, presumably like...
What Joel said, by the middle of next month, the bids are done, so we know what it's gonna cost.
Well, right, but I guess, I, part of the motivation to borrow is because we can do the projects now when they only cost this much. If we wait another year, they're gonna, you know, we have to wait construct, so that would be a really important, frankly, I think...
Well, we may have the money to do a lot of those things, so I don't even know that borrowing has to be an option. So in my mind, before I start looking at what the cost is, because I see those as a priority, I know that we haven't been able to do those things, I recognize that, and I recognize also that we need to do a lot of those things, and that it's been vetted in a priority list, so it must be important. But what, for me, I need to see what, I wanna, I wanna put that as the very last choice that I have is borrowing this TAN, and I want to see all the other options that I have with, you know, the GMP, with all the other creative funding things that you may come up with, and then have that at the bottom, you know, to say, listen, and then this much might, we might have to borrow if you wanna tackle this, the rest of these priorities. But again, I have not had anything substantial financially in five months, so I would like to have something, please.
So for the Board, it's very difficult to project or predict future construction costs. I might suggest an approach to find out what the five-year average has been over the last five years, and that would give us a good range of what those costs would be. They have been going up significantly more in recent years.
I don't, I don't feel like anybody on this Board, though, maybe I'm incorrect, so please speak up, but wants to defer not tackling a priority list that's already been vetted. I'm sure we would want to attack as many of the things that we can fund within whatever each of us finds reasonable. At least that's how I feel. So I wanna, I would like to hit all of those. I don't want to be thinking that I'm going to be pushing it out a lot farther, but I don't even wanna go there until I see what my options are and what my possible pot of money is, because I don't know that.
Well, one thing, I guess I would just caution too, is that there's not, even when Craig comes in and, and, you know, gets settled and you start looking, we're not going to find a pot of gold sitting around saying, here's 5 million dollars, we can just do all these projects, right? What we're talking about is, where can we get funding from? Whether you take it, take it from the general fund, or borrow it from the general fund, or some of our bid day savings come in better than we expect, you know, or our trend line continues and we end up with an extra million and a half dollars. At some point, so you're gonna identify some of these, at some point, the question is, you know, we're not going to end up with whatever 5, 5 million dollars to do all 11 items on the list right now, so the, unless we really wanted to do that. I mean, you could take 5 million dollars out of the general fund and do all of them, but there is another component of this, which is, which is, they've been, the items have been prioritized, but how many of these would we really want to use that funding for today, realizing that some of these items might need to stay on the list and be deferred to another day? I mean, remember, when the new building comes online, the three old buildings go offline, that PI money now gets infused back into the other buildings. So we do end up with more funding opportunity after the old buildings go offline. When we take the old buildings offline, the Board also will then have choices to make, what do you do with that property in those buildings? You know, I mean, Central's already spoken for, because that's in the trade, but the other three buildings. So, so, you know, some of this is gonna be looking at how many, how many of these really rise to the level that say, based on our funding options, do we wanna do this? So roofing can't, a full roof replacement can't be done when school is in session. So that item in particular, I'll go back to Chris and ask, and I know it's a difficult ask, but is there any way to get a sense of, can we make it another year kind of thing, right? If we don't do it this summer, can we make it another year? What are our odds of making it another year, so to speak?
We will make it as many years as we have to make it. I mean, I think that that needs to be understood. We have to do what we have to do to keep the roofs tight. I just, I reiterate, I was asked prioritize, and I prioritize roofs.
I got you, and that's, and that's being respectful, you know, where we, you know, we ask for that to happen. So in my mind, I don't see why we just don't wait, wait, continue this discussion in February, when we have more information with the understanding and the hope that we do tackle as many of those projects as possible with the prioritize, you know, prioritized list that was come up with, you know, by you, and the PI Committee also helped contribute to that as well. So is there anybody who's against that? That concept of pushing this to February for the idea that we'll have more information and Craig will have more time to look at it?
And I would, I would just say, on this list, what you don't see is what Mark talked about before, is the issue that we're currently assessing at the high school, the structural... issue.
Right.
That might rise right up there to the top, depending on what, you know...
Yeah.
Depending on what they find and what that analysis looks like. So this number is fluid, and, and, and Mark and Chris and I have this conversation, you know, this is a fluid number, because as things come up that you don't plan on, that eats in, not, not necessarily to talk about these specific projects, but something could happen in the time that, you know, we're deferring it, that all of a sudden becomes the number one priority that's not reflected on this list, too. So, you know, when you're looking at this number, and again, this is just to kind of frame you, it's not to tell you what to do. But just to frame you, you know, that number 5.1, depending on what we find at the high school, might shoot up to six. And then it might be that something else happens during the course of this year, and we come to you and say, oh, my gosh, we weren't expecting this, but, you know, the, the boiler blew at one of the buildings. And now that becomes a priority. So, you know, this is the number, right now, on January 22nd, 2020, doesn't mean it's going to be the number tomorrow. So just, you know, keep that in mind as you're thinking about ways. And, and just for clarity for Craig and, and my standpoint, you want more information for February, you want more financial information on options to how to fund this. But you, I, I think I heard you say, whether it's a tan product or it's something else, I mean, borrowing is one option, regardless of what product you use to borrow. And then you want other options of not to borrow?
Other options, period.
Or options...
Multiple ways that we can borrow money.
Options to borrow less, at less of a cost. So borrowing is still an option the board is willing to look at. So borrowing is not off the table?
No, it's my last option, to be quite frank.
I don't think anything's off the table.
Because then, I need to look at the priorities and where we're at with these priorities. And if it's something that can wait, then maybe it would move to that spot if we don't have the money. I don't know. I mean, I don't know how much we actually are going to have a month from now. I don't know what that number is. So is it still an option? I still want to have a discussion about those 10 things.
I think...
Some of those things, according, like, to Mark, like, to Mark's point, how emergency is it? Can it be pushed off?
Well, and, and that's part of what I was going, is like, when you look at some of these things, you know, so, you know, like, a full roof replacement would need to be done in the summer. So there's a timeline that if, if you were, wanted to do a full roofs replacement, you would need to get your, your bid packages out, and you have a, you need some runway before you go do that. But, you know, now, if Chris, when I asked earlier, if he would have said, there's a 50/50 chance that within the next year we need to do a full roof replacement, right then it's like, ah, there's a lot of risk there. But the patching approach, while there, there could be, you know, it could vary in some costs, you're basically saying, look, wherever the leak is, for right now, we can fix it. So, I mean, we can build, just keep building these little bridges to tomorrow with roof repair, which means if the board chooses not to do roofing this summer, we can make it to the following summer. It just, you might have some higher roofing repairs if you have some, some bigger failures. So...
We're, we're a little late right now.
We're late? That was my question. So you need, you need to know, like, now, if we're going to replace the high school roof this summer?
Um, we open our roof bids tomorrow for this year's project.
Okay.
Okay. So if we don't let you know today, the high school roof is not going to get replaced in 2020?
And again, we had a pretty significant conversation yesterday. We, we are patching roofs. We, we continue to invest in keeping the buildings dry. So whatever that takes.
Chris, why is that? Why is, why is that not a possibility to wait just three weeks? We're going to lose out on the best bid? Like, what, what's going on?
So, so I would not do roofs. I would not plan a large roof project for the summer of 2020.
In February?
And I would not get out to bid. So what happens is, those contractors, we had very good participation in our, our recent bid. Uh, we had eight or nine contractors out here. They're all working to fill their book...
Right.
For this summer.
Gotcha.
Um, so if we were to get a board approval tonight, we're a month out, but we're collecting bids, we're awarding bids in March, our contractor pool is diminished. We're not getting a good contractor, we're probably getting higher prices.
Okay. So coming back to Joel's point, you know, like, you're willing to do that as a board, and that's time sensitive. Is there anything else on that list that is the same situation, where we're going to lose options?
Well, I, I will be before the board in February with the stadium repairs.
Okay.
At the Leecher.
Gotcha.
The Leechers at the stadium.
Right.
Uh, we're doing the investigation at the high school now.
Well, well, that's February. But today?
Not today.
Which, this is, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask this anyway. So I see the middle school roof estimate is much lower than the high school roof estimate. But we wanted, you, those should be done together, presumably, just for economic purposes?
Not necessarily. So the shingle roof is the largest portion of the cost that you're looking at. That's at least a million to do the shingle.
Just to cut some groups.
And then you have the flat roofs.
Okay.
Which would be the other $350,000, plus we have some PI slotted to do some additional roofs on top of that.
Well, does it make sense to spend $250,000 on the middle school roof replacement this summer and at least get, just get that done?
Oh, we're doing a roof replacement at the, at the middle school this summer.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind.
It's not a big project, but it's the one that we're having trouble with.
Okay. So Chris can move forward with what he needs to move forward with in a timely fashion. Is everybody okay with the fact that that, we, number one priority, we okay for him to go out to bid? We'll talk about the funding mechanism next month? We actually have, yeah.
Wait, wait. Maybe I missed something. He's going to go out to bid for what?
He's, for the roof, isn't, isn't that what you asked?
We already, we already went out to bid for that.
You're talking about the middle school.
The middle school.
The middle school. You're not talking about the, you know, 1.3, right?
No.
No. Sorry.
No, we, we, we can wait till February in, in conversation, because we won't go out to bid to have that roof, roof replaced until the summer of '21.
Right. So there's no rush for us to make a, to make a decision about this tan funding or whatever funding mechanism is. Although, we were talking about pushing it a month, there's no, there's no immediate need to push it a month. I mean, at least from the roof standpoint. The other...
Yes.
Yeah, the other items, you know, is there anything else that's, that's got to be, you know, that the window is still there and you need direction on, like, right now, like the, you know, the DDC controls or the...
So I, I would say air conditioning and DDC controls are, are certainly a hot topic right near the security vestibule. Uh, one thing that occurs with the air conditioning and DDC control is that number includes adding air conditioning into spaces that are not air conditioned at the middle school, as well as the replacement of a 60-ton air conditioning unit that I believe I identified to the board two years ago as being problematic. Again, our approach is, we fix it. Our, and we will continue to fix it. Those, those repairs are very costly. When you start talking, oh my gosh, as a 50-year-old air conditioner, the Freon, the coolant goes into those air conditioners are no longer, it's no longer available, you can't get it. We bought a pallet of it two years ago and paid $20,000 for it so that we could keep that unit running. Um, because when it fails, it leaks Freon.
This is at the middle school?
At the middle school.
Right.
Um, one thing, and, and we would, I would want to have a conversation with the architect, is if you're doing air conditioning repairs and you plan on doing other renovations, there's a very specific sequence that needs to go in place if you're adding air conditioning to spaces. So if you're going to plan to do ceilings, where you have open ceilings, you need to do the air conditioning first. If you're going to do lighting, where you have old ink crate style light fixtures, you probably need to do the air conditioning first, before you would address those other construction items.
And does this need, is this, does this need to be a summer project?
Yes.
And where are we at in a, in the window to, if we wanted to pursue this or not? Are we, is the window closed?
Um, I like to make sure that we get bids. Um, we have state term pricing, and if it was identified as we want to do this summer, we could do state term pricing. I'm not always convinced that that is the cheapest or best for the Board of Education. Um, construction manager at risk or bid, because the construction manager bids it out as well. So it's always, in my opinion, to be competitive in nature. State term is competitive to, to an extent. It's not...
Would it be fair when we look at the, if we look at this list, to say, we've already talked about roofs in 2021, you know, that this, that, you know, the DDC controls and AC could be 2021, that, you know, we have a little more runway, that, that the urgency to make a decision today or in three weeks from today, you know, that, that most of these items on the list are not, you know, it's not a fire that needs to be put out right away, that we have, we can keep, we can keep limping along...
Yes.
For another year. And then that way, we could potentially have more time for Craig to settle in, more time for some of these variables to take focus, so we see what do they look like, the things that we talked about, and where our funding is. And then we have, we have a more, a more carefully thought-out plan of, okay, what are we going to attack in 2021, and where are we going to get our funding from, and what is that going to look like?
So, so my only observation I would make is, um, as far as the roofs go, we can, we can patch the roofs and we can be effective repairing roofs. When the 60-ton air conditioner goes, there is a much higher probability that there will come a time where we can't repair it.
Um, and I have to say, I don't, like, this isn't any fire drill, but I don't want to say to Craig, start, you know, in two weeks, and don't do any, you know, don't look into any other options that we might have, because I, I, I just keep harking back to, this is what, we passed that levy in 2017 or 2018, and look at how much the construction costs increased. Let's get some of this stuff done sooner rather than later, because if we just sit here and wait and wait and don't do additional research, we're, it's going to be a year from now, and then this cost is going to be up at, you know, $7 million instead of $6 million. So I guess I just want to keep juggling, and I'd like Craig to come back next month and say, this is, you know, these are your options now. I don't want to just table it for another year.
No.
But, so, again, and I'm sorry, I'm going to speak for you and I, I, I still am not clear on what you want us to come back with in terms of options. So you have borrowing, regardless if it's a tan, regardless if it's going to a bank and taking, whatever it is, borrowing is an option. But then, it's general fund. Like, what, what other information are you looking for in terms of finance, so that we can prepare that for you? Because I'm not clear what else you want to see.
Two option, it, it, part of a borrowing option, though, what I'm saying, that there's two options in terms of the general fund. So either you're taking it from the general fund in terms of the cash reserve, or you're borrowing from the general fund. So both of those, and I think, I mean, I hope I'm clear with that. So there's two different options. So the general fund can be borrowed from, or it can just be given, so we can use the general fund. That in itself is two different options, plus the tan being three options. With the borrowing and general fund, though, even though I've gotten some guidance from the Auditor of State's office, um, I just need, I would need to check with legal counsel as well, which was recommended, just to make sure that we do that case. But either way, you're going to have legal fees in terms of a tan or, or borrowing from the general to make sure it's done properly.
But those are the only three options, I guess is what I'm getting at?
Any of the general, yes.
So, so that's, so that's what I'm saying. If those are the only three options, what additional information do you want as a board to help make that decision about the financing piece of it?
I would like to know what Craig's opinion is, like, what he would recommend.
Okay.
I'd like to see, um, what projects can be accomplished with which methods of delivery. And if there's a way to vary any of the two options.
Well, well, just, just to also to clarify, so, like, right now, the, the security vestibule is pegged at 350, and the fire alarm system at the middle school was 3, 3-something, right? So, so both of those were, were coming out of the bond funds. So there's about 650-ish that we allocated out of the bond funds, which means if the 1.2 million held, right, then there's still another half a million out there that could be used to fund some of these things. So that's where you get into these variables, right? So the, the high school foundation, you know, the, the general fund is trending in a more positive light right now. Uh, you know, we don't know what the bid day savings are, right? I mean, you know, so, so some of these things, some of these things are, you know, the construction costs, they could go up significantly, or they could flatline, right? Nobody knows that. I mean, it, you know, it goes up and down based on the economy, right? You know, we end up with a recession, and then all of a sudden, you know, contractors are all fighting for work and prices come down. So you don't, you know, there is no way to predict what that is. What we do know is, is that if we just postpone the discussion, that more of these things will start to come into focus, and we'll have a better idea, as well as Craig will be in the chair and be able to get more, you know, situated with...
I'd like to, I'd like to do that for at least a month and see where we're at.
Well, does it make more sense to do in March? And I, and again, just to put it in perspective, because we're not going to know GMP, we're not going to know, we're not going to have that. So for Craig to come back and give you an analysis to say, here's, here, some money can come from here, some money can come from here, it might be clear to do it in March. I just...
Yeah, we're already, we're already saying that, you know, item number one, which is the, the high school roof is going to be postponed until next summer anyway. So I think the rest are relatively, relatively smaller pieces. And I think it's not going to hurt us to wait until March to get as full a picture as we can all the way around.
GMP is not till March, not February?
Well, no, in fact, but see, we'll get that information about the time of the board meeting. So if you're expecting us to...
It won't be February 6th. Okay.
We won't have, we won't know or be able to do that analysis to look at and say, okay, this is how much, you know, out of the contingency we have, this is how much. We won't be able to do that analysis in time, because it's going to time up too close to your board meeting. So the preference would be, let's do it in March, we'd have all that, be able to analyze it, put some scenarios together to say, you know, we have $800, $800,000 in savings here, we can use this, we can push these two things together and do these pro, like, we could do that analysis for you if we do it in March.
Okay. So we have direction. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And then I was wondering what, what's going on with the tennis courts?
We're going to talk about that in regular meeting, and we invited the tennis court families and coaches to come.
So we're going to move on, then. We have direction for that. We're going to move on to item two, our special education audit. Um, this started back in August, part of a forum that Mrs. Magiar created, along with representation from Mrs. Kramer and myself. Um, we engaged in ongoing discussion, um, monthly, um, to, with our special education parents, to try and improve our special education services. A lot of great things came out of this forum, and, um, a lot of great direction to improve our education. And, and part of that discussion was this audit, as part of us looking at how we deliver services. Is that correct? Good explanation?
Um, yeah. I, the special ed audit, it's, it's a little bit deeper than that, and I think it would be, so we, you know, we, we're constantly being told that, you know, we're, we're understaffed and we're not staffed appropriately in our special education, you know, by our special education staff. Um, you know, being told by mostly some of our staff that, you know, we're not following state set ratios and all of these things. And then we have a parent component that is saying, you know, this is how we don't feel that you're delivering services in an adequate way. And so I think the best way to, to attack all of those issues is to have a third party come in and do a special ed audit. This particular company, the contract that I provided you, has done some other local school districts throughout, throughout the state with very good results. So they will analyze your staffing levels. They will talk to all of the special ed staff. They will talk to Dr. Simsek. They will talk to some of our parents, and they will get a full picture. They'll look at our data. They'll look at IEPs. They'll look at our methods of services, and then make recommendations based on all of that information to tell us what we can do. In, in the cases in the other districts, um, the people who have engaged in this audit, they make recommendations to say, to show you how you can save money. Um, and the district that I previously was employed in, they made a recommendation that said, if you do X, Y, and Z, you can save yourself about $450,000 a year, which is a significant, um, amount of money, as we're talking about projects here.
That's half a roof.
That's right. That's the middle school amount. But it's a significant saving. So, um, I, I think it would be very proactive of the board and to, and to our district to, you know, take all these issues that we've been hearing about over the last couple of years, have a third party come in and give us a nonviolent opinion on all of those things. So staffing, how we're spending our money, how we're delivering services. And then we can bring that report back to the board to make recommendations and say, here's what, here's what they're seeing, and, you know, put some cost and see where the board wants to go in terms of direction on that.
So how long would an audit like this take?
It's going to take a few months for them to, to do, because they're talking to a lot of people, they're looking at a lot of documents, um, so a lot of interviews. So they determined it's about three months long to, about three months long it's going to take.
Yeah, they have a timeline.
Yeah, they have a timeline. So, and we didn't start according to exactly their timeline, but we've been in conversation and told them that we were having this discussion and that we would be able to provide direction here very shortly.
Does anybody have any more questions from Mrs. Magiar?
Well, just, before everybody got here, I don't know if anybody, like, I, I was just asking about our tuition costs, which have risen dramatically over the last few years. And Joel was saying...
For students who don't attend IGAS Direct 2, or say? For students who don't attend our district tour, is that what you're speaking of?
Right, right. And she was just saying that, you know, perhaps one positive outcome of this is that it would cut down on, you know, some of those really significant costs. Sure. And so many of those, as I explained to Ellen, were, you know, we've, unfortunately, we've had some issues come up where parents want to take us through due process. Due process is extremely expensive. As you know, we went through one a couple of years ago and the bills totaled, you know, a significant amount of money. Sometimes it's better to settle and do a settlement agreement. Some of the settlement agreements that we agree to are, you know, one to two-year, two to three-year settlement agreement. And then we can sit back down at the table and renegotiate that. And so, you know, sometimes the settlement agreements are necessary because we may not have the, the specific service that that child requires here. So for, for example, we don't have necessarily an emotionally disturbed unit that we have or a low incidence unit in our school district. So if we have a child who's identified and we can't meet their needs in our district with the services that we do provide, that might be something that we have to contract out. So one of the things that they'll come in and do and help us identify is, you know, where do we have holes in our continuum of services? And what would be the recommendation? So, you know, they might come back and say, you might want to consider putting this because it'll save you $200,000 a year if you can bring these kits back because now you can provide that service. That's the information that we want to get from this audit so that we, they can make some recommendations from a third party rather than people, you know, I think I feel, let's get some data behind it and let somebody else come in and tell us, you know, what they're seeing.
Okay, any other information needed?
And then the tech audit is kind of in the same venue is to look at the efficiencies of our technologies. We've, we've had some struggles with some things in the past. We had to upgrade our voicemail system. The voicemail system hasn't integrated properly the way that it should be integrated. And so we had some printers come online a couple of years back that, again, we continue to struggle with. And so not that it's the printer or not that it's the voicemail or not that it's even our technology, we need to have a better understanding as to why some of these systems are not working.